If I can get everyone to stand, Councilwoman Mason is going to give us an indication.
Father God, we just give you thanks and praise for this day, Father. Father, we just lift up this meeting to you, Father God. May our decisions not be based upon what personal wants, but based on needs and just the guidance from you to serve the citizens of this great city. And we lift up Milschu up to you, Father God. We just praise you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us. Father, we just ask protection for the men and women protecting our country, Father God. And we know that there are things that happen in this world that we don't understand, but if we focus upon you, Father God, then we can't go wrong. We just thank you for being a part of Milschu. And Father, we just want to serve you the best way that we can. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Let the record show that everybody's here. We're calling meeting to order. And Councilman Parkour will leave us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're glad that everybody's here this afternoon. Jack, we're glad you're here. Mr. Thornton, it's good to see you. And Chief Slater. David Leeann, we're glad you're here. It's at this time in our meeting that we open before for public comment. If there's anyone that'd like to make public comment, then they'll like to listen to that now. This is your chance, Jack.
I got your thanks, Dave.
Does that know a?
If there is none, we'll go ahead and move on into our agenda. First thing that we will do is to approve the minutes of council meeting of August the 8th of this year. I trust that you've all reviewed those minutes. Do you have a motion that we approve those?
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing is to approve the minutes of council meeting of August 25th of this year.
Make a motion or approve those minutes and set date.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve those minutes. Is there any discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Next thing that we'd like to do is to consider an interlocal agreement between South Plains Association of Governments and the City of Milschu for the provisions of their 911 services. I'm going to turn the floor over to David. At this point, this is a renewal of our agreement contract with the other.
Yes.
I just wanted to let you talk about that.
Essentially, SPAG gets money from the state to operate a 911 system in the South Plains region. Those funds come from the search department. So, everybody's gone through. With those funds, SPAG buys the 911 equipment, puts it into the PSTATs, Public Safety Answering Points, which Milschu is one. Milschu's agreement is that we will house and operate the equipment under the conditions that's set out in the agreement. SPAG owns the equipment, SPAG insures the equipment, SPAG does make its own equipment. Again, we agree to house and operate.
Just a few questions out of curiosity.
Sure.
It talks about that SPAG establishes the ownership of all the 911 equipment. What is that? I mean, what equipment is that?
Chief, can you answer that?
In the IT room that we have, where the racks with all the computer equipment in, when you walk in, that door, the first rack immediately to the left is, from top to bottom, is all 911 equipment. That's all their hardware, all the cabling. And then they provide us with a computer and monitor and keyboard for answering the 911 calls that come in.
You know, that belongs to SPAG.
Yes, ma'am.
It's routers and switches. You know, the 911 is set up where if we have a number of calls that come in, more calls that we can handle, then those calls roll over to the joining counties. So, it's not, they're not just dropped, they're going to be a business.
Oh, okay.
Also, if for some reason we're doing maintenance on hours, it's down. If you dial 911, you may get Cochran County or Lamb County or another county.
Somebody's gonna answer.
Dispatch from there, but somebody will answer. So, if there's some redundancy built in. So, that, all those switches and routers and hearing problems, it explains some of the technical things better than Brian or I. Those are some of the things that are involved. It's the hardware.
They're all the mapping.
Who gets called or something? Those go?
It's a company out of San Antonio, WSC. They're the vendor for SPAG in the Adleyne area. They've got a large number of the council governors that they take care of their 911 equipment.
And pays their?
SPAG does.
That's spelled out in the agreement.
Yes.
The only thing we would be liable for if we were negligent or
We didn't take care of it.
accidentally destroyed something or some of those.
Just like with the new RMS and CAT, the record management stuff and the new computer aided dispatch that we just got. Before we even touched anything, we brought them in and let them do the unplugging and the plugging of wires and whatnot so that we have the 911 interface with the computer aided dispatch. And that's supposed to be completed this week.
And in some of the, I think it's either a disagreement or some of the supplements that go with it from the state's agreement with SPAG, certain third party users can access their equipment where it all ties in for public safety purposes.
Your agreement with SPAG, does it seem to work out okay in your office?
Absolutely. If we have a trouble ticket that's not answered immediately, we let them know and they apply the heat to the vendor to get them up here and get it fixed.
Right.
Do they do monthly auditing or testing?
Yes, sir. They make sure that, what we do daily testing that they come in and look at it once a month to see that we are doing our daily testing. We use the, what's it called, the TV line for the hearing impaired or DVD, TV or something.
So, I can remember that.
Well, that, it's another little phone that we set the cradle, the handset into the cradle and we can type and they can type to us. And we can converse with the hearing impaired over that system. However, those little phones are going to be going away. And because the enhanced system is going to have a supplement to that that will allow us to do something different. But yes, we do have to do testing.
Keep up.
They also do testing.
Who's considered the PSAP supervisor?
Well, it was Jim. So
Ah, really?
Yes.
Okay.
And so
So, you'll name a new one?
Well, in the interim, I'm taking on that role since I am on the 911 committee for the CAG. I sit on that committee.
So, it's going to be you until?
That's called a PSTAT. PSTATs is a little
PSTAT?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Jim.
This contract runs for two years, is that right?
I think that's right.
Supposedly it's a pre-standup. Any other questions or discussion about the 911 services or the general contract?
I don't think it was anything weird, the contract with SPAG.
I'll second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second to enter into this agreement with SPAG for the services. Is there any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is to consider continuation of coverage administrative agreement for the Texas Municipal League intergovernmental employee benefits group. I understand you're well worth the insurance, David.
This is not an area that we spend a lot of time talking about. This is, is an agreement that TMA needs the continuation of coverage administrator for the city. Continuation of coverage for an employee who, for whatever reason, terminates with the city. And then they have, it's still 18 months, that they can elect to continue to carry their same insurance that they pay personally. And it's the same rate with a 2% to 3%. Now, the city does pay TML $50 to be the administrator. And then we also pay 50% per person on continuation of coverage. It's, continuation of coverage is a federally mandated benefit that we have to offer employees.
And TML deals directly with that former employee?
Yes.
So, y'all don't have to
No.
That's nice.
That's what this agreement says. They notify the employee that they are eligible for continuation of coverage.
And they take care of any services.
They notify that we haven't heard from you, your time to respond is going to expire, or you signed up for it, here's your bill, you pay us. If you're delinquent, they give them those, they administer that program for us.
I'm making a motion that we continue this agreement with TML.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to continue this agreement. Is there any other discussion?
It is an annual agreement.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to consider receipts from the Milschu Heritage Foundation towards Milschu for hotel motel tax funds. We had previously approved up to $2,000 for this event, I think, when we made this year. The receipts, the staff felt that meant those requirements were $1,418.37. Okay. Do you guys have any questions about those receipts or the difference in what they submitted and what they're going to give? I'll make a motion that we approve the $1,418.37.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to consider ordinance number 0456-0911. It is in regard to the 2011-2012 pledge.
Mayor, there's a summary of the budget completed with your jetpack. It's there. Also, the ordinance.
Again, the job well done. This was easier. Well, I don't know if it's ever easy. I need to choose another word. Smooth. How about that?
More comfortable.
More comfortable. Sorry. You're right.
We've always been. I thought she drove.
Thanks again for all the work. To everyone.
Yes. Well, I assure you, it was a group effort with city staff and with city council.
Well, and you know, we understand that it took long hours, preparation and research and presentation, the lead departments, budget and stuff. And we appreciate all the time and the work that went into making it simple for us to take a look at the budget. I know that there were some of those things that not everybody agreed on. But we appreciate everybody's understanding and praise. And we appreciate the fact that they all fight for their departments. But it all comes out best for the communities.
The staff spent, we spread our time out over about eight months.
So, in a few months, we'll start again?
We don't have to mess with it for another four months.
About the time we finish up with this year, it's time to hit the budget for the next year.
Seems to come around quicker. I don't know what that is.
The staff believes it's a workable budget. It's a budget that's served the city well. They complete some projects that we get out there. The auditor and I are disagreeing whether it's a balanced budget or not. I think it's not. He thinks it is because there is a reduction in fund balance that is there. The bottom line is, we do have money to fund the budget, the projections, the real estate, both for revenues and for expenditures. We will not completely deplete fund balance in the bank. Milschu is helping financially.
Due to the fact that everyone works a lot, pays attention in years.
Is there any questions about the budget or any other discussion?
I'm making a motion that we approve this one, except this opens for us.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pass ordinance number 456-0911 for the 2011-2012 pledge. Is there any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is to consider ordinance number 0457-0911. It sets the tax rate for 2012.
Mayor, we get a proposed tax rate to fund the budget that you just approved is 71.36 cents per $100 valuation. Of that, 61.78 cents is for maintenance and operation, and 9.58 cents is for debt service. And that tax rate is the effective tax rate. In other words, it's the rate required to generate the same amount of money that we generated last year. So, it's not an increase in tax revenues.
Any other question? I'll make a motion that we pass ordinance number 0457-0911 that sets the tax rate for 2012.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And I hope that the whole community understands that there is no tax relief as far as the city. We understand that there are other folks in the community that that's not a fact. So, it, you know, and I think that the reason that the community should appreciate that is because of the hard work of the city employees. You know, their conservative endeavors and their hard work and trying to manage the public's money. And I hope that everyone would appreciate that. Next thing on our agenda is to consider ordinance number 058-0911, which updates the active and continuing records management program for the Texas State Library and Archives Commission.
As best we can tell, Mayor, this ordinance formalizes submitted actions at the council a number of years ago. We've had a record management plan in place. The city secretary has been designated as Record Management Officer for more than 12 years. That will require, I'm thinking that that must have been done, we cannot find an ordinance nor a resolution that establishes that until we think it must have been done in minute action. Now, it's required to be formalized with an ordinance. That's what this ordinance does. This is for the maintenance of all the city records. There's a schedule of how long we have to keep certain records, when certain records have to be destroyed. Some records are painted permanently.
So, this is just to say that we have a plan in place?
Yes.
And we know the number of years for certain things?
Yes. And we have a Record Management Officer who's in charge and is following that policy.
Again, out of curiosity, are there some things that are kept longer than others? So, you have to keep up with so many years for certain things?
We have some things that we've destroyed, you know, yearly basis. Yeah, they don't have to be retained.
Okay.
Election records, for instance, used to be kept for 22 months. Now, we have to keep those for six months. Personnel records are permanent. We have some police records that are for 75 years. It varies on the kind of record it is as to how long you keep it.
The State Library Commission establishes those retention schedules and they tell us what it is. We actually contract with a partner that goes out and reviews all our records and say these, first we'll bring them the new records that we generated during this year. And they separate those, box them and label them and date them. And then they go through our archive records and say these need to be destroyed and these need to be destroyed.
I'll keep up with that.
Destroy four, five boxes a year?
Probably. Of course, then whenever retention schedules change, you know, in that, you know, like our election records were going from 22 months to six months. So, we have some things there.
That you can get rid of now?
Yes.
Sometime we'll give you a cure in the basement and you can see all of them.
I see them. Early, I have. I was like, ooh, man, I need to keep up.
They're well organized or all
I know they are. That's why I'm saying, I mean, just to have the upkeep of knowing what's what and how long you keep it. Okay, but these are ready to be destroyed. These we have to keep another year or two.
And from time to time, we have to go and access those. The police department has some places come out that can access records. But they can't be removed from the premises. They have to make copies and leave the original.
So, if they, if they wanted something, you go look it up, make a copy, take a copy and the originals.
I will leave the building.
She's the record manager.
It's her name. And I understand that completely. I make a motion that we pass ordinance number 0458-0911.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is to consider resolution number R681-0911, authorizing the submission of a contract amendment request for the CDDE/CDG grant fund contract between the City of Milschu and the Office of the Texas Department of Rural Affairs. Now, this is just an amendment for that?
Yes, when they completed the street improvement program, the, when they measured the actual yardage of asphalt and concrete that Milschu increased, oh, it even increased from 3,895 square yards to 4,090 square yards. Concrete increased 2,060 square yard to 2150 square yard. So, that's just an amendment to change those amounts in the contract. Final plate that will reflect the actual amounts.
Nice to hear they don't penalize it. I mean, it's like every time you turn around, you get penalized for something. So, it's nice to hear they didn't penalize a springy thing, that they just made an adjustment to it.
Right.
By the way, the street over in my neighborhood looks really good.
Both streets look good.
The other one looks
Doing good stuff. But those contracts are written with this amount is what the contract is for, but the final plate will be based on the actual amount that's completed.
I'll make a motion that we approve that resolution.
I'll second that.
We have a second. Is there any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next thing is to receive financial statement for the month ending August 31st of this year. I'm sure everybody's gone through that line by line. Is there any questions, comments? I had a lot of questions. David Leeann took a little earlier. One comment that I'd like to make is that it's nice to see some of the revenue areas that are much more than what we had budgeted for. So, that's always nice that we took in more money than we had expected.
I'll make a motion to receive the financial statement.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second to receive that financial statement for the month ending August 31st. Is there any other discussion? Not? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. The next thing on our agenda is the administrative reports.
We already talked a little about the CDDT program and the street improvement project. Contracts are completed with the projects, the streets. They do look good. I think they'll be a real benefit to the community, not only just for those areas that the project is located, but I think also for the whole community. The home project, the homeowners did an unfolding last Friday. There is a waiting period. Give them a chance to change their mind. It's probably not going to happen. We probably will start demolition of the homes probably next week.
Fourth.
Construction should start soon after that, probably right at first month. That project's moving on. There, I don't have a date on the Milschu water park. I will. The tenants was down a little bit in August. I think everybody getting ready for school. I think we're overall really pleased with the tenants at Water Park this year. I know nearly every day that you go, that we went down there, 40 to 50% of the cars in the park might have been in Mexico town. There's a lot of little bit folks on the beach. We're drawing some folks from out of town. I think it was another successful summer at Water Park. We were really pleased. Couple of other things that want to affect you on the registering committee will need to meet with the council or the chair of that committee, probably a call meeting later this month with the council to consider approving their recommendation for the registering for a tenant that's in Milschu. We'll notify you that will be that one. Oh, that's one meeting. We'll ask the mayor to call a meeting for Monday the 19th to complete that.
Did it have to be separate?
No, there was a mix-up in some publishing requirements.
Okay.
So The 5:30, 5:30 on the 19th, next Monday.
We'll actually have a public hearing first and then council will take action on the plan.
Last meeting, did a budget workshop. We talked about the GIS program and looked at the program. And I had intentions of putting something on the agenda for this time. In the meantime, I talked to another provider who also has the GIS program. He sent me a proposal on that. And so, I thought we'll wait and get that proposal before we move forward with the GIS project. The only other thing I have is that the TML regional meeting will be Thursday, September 22nd, will be at Ramsey Canyon. And you can let your intentions be known, Leeann, this point in the year. Also, of course, TML conference is coming up in October. There's some information out there on that. If you need some ticketed events If you need some tickets to events, you need to let us know so we can get those ordered for you. And that's all I've got, Mayor.
Do you have the council? Congratulate the wheels on Friday night's football wheel. Those who either weren't there, certainly wasn't bored, you have to...
See blessed tea.
What are you getting in return for that?
Blessed tea.
Blessed tea. Sweet tea or...
Will the sweet tea come to you at the conference?
Please tell y'all how much I appreciate everybody being here. Three hours, yeah.